Okay, good evening everyone. We'll officially start our meeting. If I can ask everyone to please rise for the question.
The United States of America and through the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a packed house. I think our first order of business definitely has to be a warm welcome to all our students tonight. It's wonderful to see you all and thank you for the families for joining us. We are going to get right into business this evening. Our first order of business will be our public hearing on the expenditure from the reserve, a repair reserve fund. Just to give everyone a little bit of an update, we do have a, this is the official public hearing for a repair reserve. This is for an air handler and adding a condensing unit in the Locust Valley Middle School, High School. We do have a reserve fund that handles these unexpected issues that do come up sometimes. And so this would be officially our public hearing then. Is there any questions or concerns from the board? No? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to public comment.
No public comment.
Okay, no public comment? And we will move on to reports to the board. Uh, we have Jason and Sienna joining us as student representatives.
Good evening, the Board of Education. We would like to thank you for having us here tonight. To start off, the annual Volcano Valley tournament was held earlier than usual in January. Both students and staff always look forward to this fun and exciting event. Members of the Mont U N Club attended their conference at Plainview Old Beth Beach High School on January 25th and 26th and achieved much recognition for their successes. The language department historian as Locust Valley students welcomed fifth graders to showcase Italian culture at the annual Italiano festival on January 24th.
Additionally, French students celebrate the annual holiday by chandelier by baking crepes and appreciating French culture. Furthermore, the World Language Honor Society visited elementary schools to read books in French, Italian, and Spanish on February 4th. Also, students involved in student government and varsity girls basketball team read to students of primary and elementary schools, encouraging the passion for literature. Congratulations to the newly inducted members of the National Honor Society and the recognition of their academic excellence. Thank you again to the board for having us tonight. We wish everyone a safe and enjoyable February break. Thank you.
Thank you both. May I perhaps we have a little surprise?
We absolutely did. So tomorrow night at 6:00 PM and Thursday night at 6:00 PM is our elementary school musical, Hundred One Dalmatians. My name is Amory Bonasfina. I'm honored to be here tonight to introduce my team. And if you look at the stage, there might be a few Dalmatians behind the curtain. So in the past, Locust Valley has outsourced our elementary theater productions. However, thanks to the incredible support of our Board of Education and Central Office, we now have an in-district team, the most incredible team. And I just want to shout them out before our performance. We have Ms. Lisa Conti, who's our producer and costume designer, Ms. Taylor Duff, our choreographer, Mrs. Christine Huber, right over here to my left, our musical director, Mrs. Dana Edinger, our set designer, and of course, our director and wonderful new addition to Locust Valley, Ms. Michaela Pollak. And now, to get us all excited for this week's production of Hundred One Dalmatians Kids, we have a special presentation that will start with a video and then we ask everyone to enjoy their performance.
We are the cast of Hundred One Dalmatians Junior and we would like to show you what this experience has taught us.
Theater has taught me to learn from my mistakes. Theater has taught me to find my voice. Theater has taught me that I can do anything I set my mind to.
Theater has taught me patience. Theater has changed my life.
Theater has taught me how to write in third person.
Theater has taught me confidence.
Theater has taught me how to transform my face with makeup.
Theater has taught me to trust the process.
Theater has taught me to support others.
Theater has taught me that I'm special.
Has taught me to imagine possibilities.
Has taught me to dream big.
Theater has taught me to self-evaluate.
Theater has taught me to collaborate.
Theater has taught me to persevere.
Theater has taught me to make connections.
Theater has taught me to reflect on progress.
Theater has taught me to set a big goal and celebrate small victories.
And now enjoy our performance from the cast of Hundred One Dalmatians Kids.
Good evening, Board of Education and Locust Valley family and friends. Thank you for having us here tonight. Over the past few months, we have learned how to dance, sing, and act.
We learned state vocabulary, theater directions, and how to work together. We've learned how to apply state to makeup, write bios, and Stardust posters.
We persevered through challenges and know in our hearts that we are limitless.
Throughout our performance, we are hoping to collect items for the animal shelter and inspire in others to help animals in need.
Enjoy Ms. Pollak's famous almond sugar cookies with a QR code to scan and watch later.
Join us February 12th and 13th at 6:00 PM to watch the entire show.
Sit back, relax, and enjoy the Hundred One Dalmatians preview.
Sit back, relax, and enjoy the 101 Dalmatians preview.
Canine Crunchies can't be beat. They make each meal a special treat. Happy dogs are those who eat delicious canine crunchies. Canine Crunchies all good things, they love them meat and force on their meat. Small chewable or they think all dogs love canine crunchies. So... Do what all the smart dogs do and you'll feel great the whole day through. You can be a champion too if you eat canine crunchies.
Darling, please, shh, don't like the neighborhood.
They can't help me, yep, it really is a catchy tune.
La 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 la, la 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 la. La 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 la, delicious canine crunchies. La 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 la, la 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 la. La 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 la, delicious canine.
Well, didn't our neighbor Corolla Vale come to pass a visit? What on earth is all that racket? How am I ever going to get my beauty sleep?
Beauty sleep? Did she say beauty sleep? That's a loud.
Why, little ones?
Well, they're all boy.
Why, Corolla? What a lovely fur.
You like it? It's a genuine one of a kind and costs oozes of pound. Now, I nearly completed my collection of every kind of fur coat in the entire world. It's lovely. And I'm terribly sorry about the noise.
The puppies mean no harm.
Well, just be sure the puppies don't do it again. Out of the yows and growls of little furry spotted creatures. Little furry spotted creatures. And why, I don't think I've quite seen anything like them. Look at the depths, look at the patterns, while they are practically a work of art and just what I need to complete my collection. You know what? I've changed my mind. I've been with that affair for long enough. No one to play with. I can't wait to wear, I mean, care for all the little puppies. I'll buy the whole litter.
How much?
I'm afraid we couldn't sell them, or Pong and Patita will be heartbroken.
Anita, don't be ridiculous. You can't possibly afford to keep them, and you can scarcely afford to feed yourself. Here's a hundred for the lot.
Corolla, we're not selling the puppies.
Oh, Shirley, you must be joking. Two hundred.
No, 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 I, I, I need it.
All right, you force my hand. Three zillion pounds, and that's my final offer.
Sorry, Corolla, we're not selling a single one.
Why, you horrid man? You, you... All right, keep the little piece of yourself for all I care. But I'm warning you, I'll get just even. Just wait, you'll be sorry, you fools. You, you need the poo.
Yes, we'll take a Dalmatian vacation. A Dalmatian vacation, I say.
We'll take a Dalmatian vacation to revel you home with the view. The peace and the quiet will identify it as our little dream that's come true. Imagine that rustic location. Safety is truly divine. And on my vacation, I'll feel inspiration and no obligation to die. We'll snuggle close in the evening in the glow of burning light. In all night long, we'll hear the song of crickets and frogs and dogs and dogs and dogs and dogs and dogs. We'll take a Dalmatian vacation where our population can roam. In this new location, our whole aggregation will love our Dalmatian home. Vacation, Dalmatian home. And so we'll take a Dalmatian vacation where our population can roam. In this new location, our whole aggregation will love our Dalmatian home. Vacation, Dalmatian home. Now let's lots of love and laughter. Everyone is happy and rafters. Take a bounce trip to the rafters. We hope you have fun, but now we are done. A hundred and one Dalmatians. Dalmatians. Dalmatians.
I think I speak on behalf of the Mont U.N. District as if it were quite a treat over the next couple nights. Bravo, bravo. Wednesday, Thursday night, we can see the full act. And I think we all look forward to a very long future of theater for these students. Amory, thank you very much. Beautiful job to all the staff as well. Excellent, excellent work. Thank you all for being here. So this evening, we are not only joined by one exceptional group of our youngest students, but we are also so honored to have our Class of 2025 recognitions this evening. And if I could please welcome Patrick DeFomenting, Elise Chunetsky, and Jen Massa to the podium. Thank you so much.
Certainly a lot of talent in the room tonight. I walked past the gym. We have some big time basketball players tonight closing out the season. Certainly a lot of talent on the stage tonight. Thank you to everybody involved. And I'm proud to be among our finest high school students this evening. We're proud to recognize... This evening, we are proud to have the opportunity to recognize and celebrate an amazing group of dedicated students and their parents and staff. And in the spirit of our younger students who commented on their favorite elements to their involvement in 101 Dalmatians, supporting others and celebrating victories, we're here tonight to do just that. Our staff works each day to drive a challenging academic program which fosters individual and collective growth. We thank our colleagues for their daily efforts and commitment. And tonight, we celebrate the distinguished efforts of our scholars, students. As the principal and as a parent, I congratulate all of our parents and family members for the student's success, as surely associated with your support, guidance, and sacrifice. Congratulations. Congratulations to our parents and family. Presenting this evening with me will be Assistant Principal Ms. Jen Massa and Ms. Amy Watson, as well as Director of Counseling, Events, Studies, and Research, Ms. Elise Chunetsky. At this time, I ask Ms. Massa and Ms. Watson to begin our student recognition.
Thank you. We would like to call forward the following students. Inshall Abid, Addison Edwards, Jack Pratch, John Gambino, Maeve German, Isabella Ayodichi, El Vietta Hoonjes, James Martin, Abigail Misselli, Grace O'Mahoney, Sienna Singe, Gianna Worley, Andrew Wiman, Olivia Wilde, and Sam Zarro. This year, these fifteen students were invited to a meeting with the building administration, Director of Finance, and the school counselors. They were recognized for earning the distinction of top fifteen students in the Class of 2025. We were all... We were all eager to share a net congratulations on this accomplishment. When prompt to answer the question, "Who will you call first?", a couple of students shared that they were going to call their mom and dad or their siblings. And to the question, "To what do you attribute this honor?", students responded by saying their parents instilled with them the value of hard work or that they pushed themselves to work diligently because they cared about doing well. Distinction among the Locust Valley High School ranking of our top fifteen student performers is an outstanding accomplishment. To each of you in the top fifteen, your achievement and success through rigorous coursework should be celebrated with pride that comes from learning, acknowledging that with face the challenges, you have demonstrated to be persistent, dedicated, resilient, and willing to make extraordinary efforts. Congratulations to each of you on a well-deserved impressive honor of ranking among our top fifteen highest-ranking academic achievers. Please step forward as we say your name to receive your award. Inshall Abid. Addison Edwards. Jack Pratch. John Gambino. Maeve German. Isabella Ayodichi. El Vietta Hoonjes. James Martin. Abigail Misselli. Grace O'Mahoney. Sienna Singe. Gianna Worley. Andrew Wiman. Olivia Wilde. Sam Zarro. Congratulations to each of you, well deserved.
Inshall Abid. Inshall, please stay up front. Congratulations to the Locust Valley High School's Class of 2025 Validating Touring, Inshall Abid. Inshall's diligent efforts, passion for success, and overall attention to pursuing all the opportunities at Locust Valley High School have resulted in her status as the class Validating Touring of our school. Inshall has earned the highest academic status and honor among the graduating class and is invited to address the students, staff, and families and our school community in the June 2025 graduation ceremony. She has a rich history of coursework that includes and is not limited to 13 IB courses, three Advanced Placement courses, Italian, Chef's, Anatomy and Physiology, and Physics. Most impressive upon our staff is that among Inshall's academic accolades and everyday success, she demonstrates the reputation identified by staff as follows. Inshall is extremely hardworking and personable. She holds herself to a very high standard and balances her socializing and schoolwork very well. She is constantly wanting to gain new knowledge. Brilliant, ambitious, thoughtful, and humble. Empathetic, thinking about others always before herself. Inshall is a talented and accomplished individual who is multilingual, a National Merit Commended Student, an AP Scholar, and an IB Diploma Candidate. She's pursuing a seal of by literacy, rostered in Honor Societies, participating in the Pre-Health Club, Book Club, Science and History Bowl, and dedicating time as a Kumon Instructor. A proud family member, when asked about her success, she beautifully focused on her gratitude for her parents' tutelage with their sacrifices as immigrants from Pakistan and her resulting opportunities. Inshall is certainly a standout Falcon student interested in humanities and the STEM fields with a positive future ahead. For the well-deserved and impressive honor of being the Adore Validating Touring, please join me in congratulating her. That was great. I looked up and I saw a few fist bumps. That was great. Thank you to whoever that audience member is. Abigail Misselli, please step up front. Congratulations to the Locust Valley High School's Class of 2025 Salutatorian, Abigail Misselli. Abigail's diligent efforts, passion for success, and attention to pursuing all the opportunities at Locust Valley High School have resulted in this her status as the class Salutatorian. Abigail has earned distinguished academic status and honors among her class and is also invited to address the audience at our graduation ceremony with a rich history of coursework that reflects our interest and includes, but is not limited to 14 IB courses, three AP courses, Italian, Jazz, Guitar, Photography, Mythology, Advanced Filmmaking, and the Career Exploration Program. She is an AP Scholar, an IB Diploma Candidate, a Scholar-Athlete participating in field top league, flag football, and track and field. Pursuing a seal of by literacy, rostered in several Honor Societies, and has participated as a jester in the theater program as well as clubs, including film and scouts. Creativity distinguishes Abigail as she presents as one of the film programs most highly regarded former and present students. Abigail is a talented and accomplished individual who is presented by high school colleagues as follows. Words will not fully capture how exceptional Abby is. While she possesses many remarkable talents, what stands out most about her is her enthusiasm for learning and the respect she consistently demonstrates. Her passion for learning and commitment to her education is truly inspiring. Abby works well with her peers, creating an environment that maximizes her academic potential and the same for others. An exceptional student, her ability to connect past to present to recognize nuance in argumentation and to make comparisons and connections over time and across the world is of the highest quality seen in our school. Ralph Waldo Emerson once stated that nothing great was ever achieved without enthusiasm. Ralph Waldo Emerson once stated that nothing great was ever achieved without enthusiasm. And Abby's presence brought an infectious enthusiasm to all of her courses through high school. A proud, considerate, and grateful family member, Abigail's success is certainly a product of her family's influence and support. For the well-deserved and impressive honor of being named our Salutatorian, please join me in congratulating Abby.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Watson, and I am one of the high school assistant principals. And it is an honor tonight to be able to recognize the following students. When I call your name, please come and step forward. Grant Cretin, Millie Montaire, Henry Capel Scobin, Jason Lu, Holly Ward, Inshall Abid, Maeve Germanz, and Sarah Nyirberg. Please come forward. The National Recognition Programs award academic honors to high-performing, underrepresented students, recognizing strong academic performers with academic honors that can be included on college and scholarship applications as well as connect students with universities across the country, helping them stand out during the admissions process. More than 180,000 students from all fifty states were eligible to apply for the College Board National Recognition Programs. Ninety thousand students are being recognized in this year's College Board National Recognition Program. To qualify, students must have scored in the top ten percent of the PSAT test takers in their state or earn two AP scores of three or above by their sophomore year. They must have a GPA of 3.3 or higher, which is about a ninety. They must identify as African-American, Black, Hispanic Latinx, or Indigenous or attend a high school in rural or small town and/or be part of a family where a student's parent or parents do not have a bachelor's degree. So each of these students has earned a separate recognition. So our National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar is Grant Cretin. Congratulations to Grant. African-American Recognition Program winner is Millie Montaire. Our National First Generation Recognition Program goes to Henry Capel Scobin, Jason Lu, and Holly Ward. The National Merit Commended Student. A commended student in the National Merit Scholarship Program is based on achievement on the preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test, PSAT. The National Merit Scholarship Program honors individual students who show exceptional academic ability and potential for success in rigorous college studies. About thirty-four thousand commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Commended students may become candidates for special scholarships sponsored by corporation and businesses. Performances on the PSAT was exceptional for these students, and recognition is credit to the honored individuals, respective parents, and our school. Congratulations on the National Merit Commended Student Honors to Inshall Abid, Millie Montaire, Maeve Germanz, and Sarah Nyirberg. The National Merit Semi-finalist. I would like to call John Gambino forward. John is being recognized tonight for being named a semifinalist in the National Merit Scholarship Program, which is based on achieving an exceptional score on the preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test, the PSAT. John is one of sixteen thousand students from across the country to continue in the competition for seven thousand two hundred and fifty National Merit Scholarships worth nearly twenty-eight million that will be offered in the spring. To be considered for a Merit Scholarship Award, semifinalists must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist level of the competition. Submit a detailed scholarship application in which they provide information about their academic record, participation in school and community activities, leadership abilities, employment, honors, and awards received. National Merit Scholarship winners will be announced in a nationwide news release beginning in April and concluding in July. Please join me in congratulating John Gambino on earning the semifinalist status. We wish you best of luck. John's certificate is coming as he completes the competition. Congratulations. Good evening, everyone. I would like to take this time now to call forward our AP Scholars. So please come forward as I say your name. Inshall Abid, Millie Montaire, Kieran Bowden, Molly Bowden, Addison Edwards, Katherine Keeler, John French, Giovanni Gambino, Anna Mae Germanz, Maeve Germanz, John Hartnett, Jackson Hoban, Isabella Ayodichi, Holly Connor, Ronnie Kupour, Elbieta Khunjes, Jason Lu, Caleb Malouche, James Martin, Abigail Messeli, Sarah Nyirberg, Sienna Singh, Gianna Worley, Andrew Weeman, Olivia Wilde, Sam Zarouf, and Grace O'Mahoney. The AP Scholar Award is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more Advanced Placement exams. The AP Scholar with Honor Award is granted to students who receive an average score of at least a 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. The AP Scholar with Distinction Award is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. We are proud to have all of these students here with us tonight, members of the class of 2025, who are AP Scholars. Sam Zarouf. Maeve Germanz. John Hartnett. Isabella Ayodichi. Caleb Malouche. Anna Mae Germanz. Congratulations, AP Scholars. You've made your school, your families, and yourselves proud. We're happy to celebrate you tonight. Please step forward so we can take your photo.
Okay, VIP, congratulations. Guys, see a lot of hands. Can you guys help me just return the chairs?
So I do have the pleasure of speaking about two more pieces to recognize the school and students in general. So I'm just going to continue for another couple of minutes, but I'm not going to call any other students up, so just FYI. However, we are really proud of a couple of our pieces that we just wanted to leave you with. So I would just share some more information with you. So first and foremost, congratulations, seniors. Amy Watson, I'm so sorry. I did not include you in my introduction. I should have looked up, and of course you would be into the question. Thank you for being here. So I do have the pleasure this evening of announcing that Locust Valley High School has earned distinction on the AP Scholar, excuse me, AP School Honor Roll for the 2023-2024 school year, which is our second consecutive year. And they just started this Honor Roll piece, so we're really happy and proud to be a part of it. So the AP School Honor Roll recognizes students whose AP programs are delivering results for students while broadening access to those programs. Schools earn this status based on criteria that reflect a commitment to increasing college-going culture, providing opportunities for students to earn college credit, and maximizing college readiness. Schools are reviewed based on college culture, college credit, and college optimization. Here are the criteria as noted on the screen. So for college culture, forty percent or more of the graduating cohort took at least one AP exam during high school. Locust Valley High School earned bronze in this area. For college credit, twenty-five percent or more of the graduating cohort scored a three or higher on at least one AP exam during high school. Again, Locust Valley High School earned bronze in that area. For college optimization, five percent or more, the slide says two, I apologize for that error, but it's actually five percent or more of the graduating cohort took five or more AP exams during high school. And at least one of those exams was taken in ninth or tenth grade so that students are spreading their AP experience across all grade levels rather than feeling disproportionate pressure in any one single year. Locust Valley High School in this area earned silver. We're very proud of our AP program here. It's rigor, and most importantly, our students' success in the program. One final word I would like to make is about our IB program here. We are really proud of our Class of 2024 International Baccalaureate Diploma Recipients at Locust Valley High School and the program's success. Thank you and congratulations to all of our students who completed this rigorous program pathway satisfying all international baccalaureate requirements to earn the IB Diploma. Our students listed on the screen have met the challenges that come with the university-style preparation and demands. During their two-year academic journey, IB Diploma candidates assess through written essays and exams, portfolios, film, and/or presentations in six academic courses. They complete the Theory of Knowledge course, they submit a four-thousand-word extended essay, and they report experiences that involve creativity, activity, and service, highlighting the importance of students' place on supporting and building community. Students earn scores on assessments for a total score of at least twenty-four to earn the IB Diploma. And the students here who are all listed, who are now our alumni, did earn that diploma. Our hope is that each of them has gained the benefit of academic of academic inquiry and that they've been engaged in dialogue and assessments and assignments that have cultivated a broad mindset and a global perspective. Please join me in applauding them and congratulating them on their successes as they are deserving of recognition as well. So thank you so much. And we appreciate that we were given the opportunity to come here and spend some time to share all of the success of our students. And look forward to doing it again soon.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all of our administrators being here tonight. I know your work going into creating a very rigorous forced offering is obviously seen through the achievements of our students. And I wish all of our graduating seniors, especially those here tonight and their families, one more round of applause. At the time, we're going to move on to our superintendent's report and turn over to Dr. Turner. Thank you.
Good evening. So Mr. Sisera is going to join me. Okay, so what we're going to be speaking about, what I'm going to be speaking about are three different things. We're going to do an update on the cellphone policy because we have some good information to share. We're gonna, I'm going to be speaking about just an update on our enrollment. And then finally, a UPK update. So what I wanted to start with, just because I think it's really important to highlight the ongoing continuous work that is going on here with our cellphone policy. So thank you to the board for helping us really start this initiative, putting a policy in place. And to the administration that has carried this through as well as our teachers and staff members. So we received a phone call on December 16th. That was pretty exciting from a superintendent, upstate from the Ichabod Crane School District. And she had contacted us and said one of her board members had gone to the NISBA presentation, saw us speak, and they really wanted to meet with us. So we agreed to set up a Zoom meeting. And she had a task force that they called it a cellphone task force. There were, and Mr. Sisera, correct me, I think there were three students, lots of school administrators, school teachers. And they listened to us for over an hour, present our information, had really had incredible questions for us. And even as Mr. Sisera and I were going through this, and when you're sometimes, when you're doing something, it's different, but when you're describing something and trying to help another district to get something off, you realize how much you've learned in the process. And after that, we really reflected and said, I think we need to come back to the board and kind of give them an update from last year, of where we were last year and kind of where we are now. Because it's really been exciting for us. And I think the one thing in education that I really enjoy is that I feel that educators always want to help each other. And we visit a lot of school districts. People come and see us. We rely on each other because we all can't do everything, but we certainly can watch each other grow in different areas and then of course lend a hand when it's our turn. So we were very proud of this. And then we had a presentation on January 27. And then when our school district was away in Disney, I got a phone call from Newsday. And they said, is there any possibility we can set up some time to speak to you about your cellphone policy and how it's going and the implementation? Of course, I agreed to speak with them. That was on a Thursday. And then the very next day, on the 31st, they reached out, they came to our school district, they met with Mr. Sisera, took some pictures and really got an opportunity also to speak to the teachers. And a lot of this is solely on giving teachers back their classrooms. You know, I know as a former teacher, you work really hard. And all you want to do is get in that classroom and for the next thirty years, work with inquisitive children. And you want them to pay attention to you. So that's really the heart and soul of this. And sometimes when we're looking back, we're thinking, what's the most important thing that we do every day? Educate children. That happens by giving the teachers that ability to not have to compete with technology. So Mr. Sisera is going to really walk you through the data just so you can see where we are this school year. And I think it's important just to get a glimpse of kind of where we're even headed because we continue to head in the right direction. Come on.
So I think I'll first start by saying I'm just humbled for the recognition and thankful for all the support on all the board, our district, the parents, the teachers have been great. The biggest honor in all this is as we track this data and hear more feedback from our teachers and students and also our parents, you know, the greatest honor in all of this, like Dr. Turner said, is the fact that our teachers are able to really focus on teaching and learning. Our kids are able to immerse themselves in their curriculum. So we're always tracking data. And before our Ichabod Crane presentation, we look at all kinds of data across all different student behaviors, student discipline. And from the early part of the year, from September 1st till really the end of December, we noticed that cellphones probably had our biggest drop-off. And when we looked at them year over year in our snapshot, and of course, I'm changing my slides on my computer from out here. We noticed that if you looked at a month over a month, it looks like we really got the message out to the community and in a very clear fashion to our students and educating them on, you know, we've been successful implementing this policy. And they have certainly responded by cooperating with our directives and our requests of them. And so overall, from September until the end of January, so I updated this a little bit, we've seen a fifty-six percent decrease in phones that had to be confiscated from children and us redirecting them. So it's an ongoing, you know, practice, if you will. It will never end. You feel like you're a broken record sometimes. You're saying these things in different forms. But again, I'm just really humbled by the support and proud of our teachers and our students and our community. And if you look at discipline across various lenses, last year, we had 389 total disciplinary infractions that we recorded on our tracking data. Two hundred and ten of them were cellphones, representing about fifty-four percent. Sixth graders, we knew weren't really our large violators of that policy. In fact, it was the eighth graders. And that trend continues today. If you look at the bottom right-hand side there, on a half-year basis or the first semester, we're averaging 164 disciplinary infractions, fifty-nine with phones, but we're down fifty-six percent in relation to phones, like I mentioned before. Our overall disciplinary issues are down eighteen percent. And once again, our eighth graders are coming through and showing us that they are, I guess, the large violators to date of the phones. I think the biggest difference this year is not only has the message been out, it's becoming part of our culture and as our cohorts of students graduate into high school, we've just been able to continuously build upon our educating of students, the community. So we speak about all these things to our students in our town hall meetings. You know, we challenge them to ask them, have you been doing all these things to the best of your ability? And we talk about the rationale behind why we ask them for their personal devices, their backpacks and things like that in their lockers. We've also partnered with Nassau County Police Department, so I could pull things. Our pop officers, our homeland security officers came in December to educate our students, not because Mr. Sisera said you can't have your phone or you can't use social media in school, but basically to educate our students on their digital footprint, how this will potentially follow them for the rest of their lives, how it could potentially impact their college admissions. And so we did this right before the December break because inevitably, each December when we go away for an extended period of time, something always seemed to trickle back into the building that happened over break and now is impacting our instruction. Pleased to say, after this presentation, the day before break, nothing flowed or found its way back into this building as of the new year in relation to either social media, infractions, social media bullying, harassment. Take your back. Doc said I have three minutes, so I should probably hurry up. The other thing I'd like to say is the students have been great and really just coming down to the office. We gave them a dedicated phone. We hang some pictures of them because we love them and we care about them to show that we're proud of them. But they have their own phone. They can use it anytime. They don't know my cellphone number. They could go to the locker, bring their phone down, look up the number. Or better yet, it gives us an opportunity to talk to students and guide them if they need help, if they can't reach their parents. Mrs. Hess, Mrs. Banerjee, my office staff have been instrumental. And it just, it helps us form relationships with the students. They come and they see us in a different light. Like, hey, how you doing? What are you guys doing? What do you need? And sometimes they might not even need the call back. They just have a simple question that they are not sure who to ask first, so we're able to guide them in that way.
All right, switching twice again.
Same thing like we do in our town halls. We discuss these things with our teachers. Our teachers have been really instrumental. I'm only one person. I have to thank our Dean of Students, Kevin Begrezeck, our AP, Mr. Ligerfo, but also our teachers who have been empowered, quite honestly, with the support of everyone to help reinforce these rules, right? To help enforce them and guide students and maybe talk them through some of these things that we're working towards. And I think finally, like I said, it sounds like a broken record. I say these things often. I print out pamphlets of the Wait Till Eight campaign. I call for the principals. I include them on every single newsletter. And I always track who clicks on it or not. But we try to just be a broken record in the fact that research says it is best to try to wait till at least eighth grade to give your student any sort of phone, much less a smartphone, and that it does negatively impact their instruction and their social, emotional learning overall. So with that, again, humbled for the recognition, thankful for the opportunity. Appreciate everything you guys did to support me and Dr. Turner who did this initiative going. And ultimately, it's allowed us to focus on other projects like project-based learning in middle school. We've been doing a lot more research on project-based learning with collaborative groups that I want to see students talking and immersing themselves in what they're doing and really digging deep into the curriculum and not being distracted continuously by phones. So thank you all. I'm ready.
And I have to tell you, this is a daunting task. So we really give you so much credit for undertaking this work. In this day and age, it's not easy balancing between that pool of technology and I think a shared vision of this board of really giving children their true childhood, giving them an opportunity to learn in the best capacity possible. And we could not be any more thankful to be on this journey with our administrators, with our superintendent. We truly thank you for implementing the work and actually doing the work day to day to make it impactful in our building. So thank you.
Can I just say something? I just want to thank Kristin and Mike because I think what really has to be highlighted is that they were brand new. They came into a district. They were both new at the same time. And I know that they teach an administrative school to fill out a system for a year. And you didn't. And you knew what was needed for the kids from your own experiences. You knew that the board had discussed it and thought about it, but was unable to watch it as far as concerning the cellphone ban. And I cannot be more thankful that you did it because it was effective. You did it for the right reasons. It didn't cost us a dime. We didn't buy into the yonder packs that somebody's brother-in-law owns somewhere in the state. And we did it for free. And we did it for the right reasons. And more than that, I'm just so thankful that we're not dealing with this mess that's about to incur statewide over the debate over banning cellphones or not. It's done. We did it. The numbers are incredible. And it just goes to show that when you have consistency in just expectations, you get that discipline. Because the numbers show the kids aren't being disciplined. They know what's expected of them. You've set the standard. You've been consistent. And, you know, now it's the parent's terms to step up and do it on the outside. We've done what we can do on the inside. So I thank you very, very, very much. And I hope to see, Patrick, as we go into the high school, these numbers, I mean, just looking from last year's eighth grade to this year's eighth grade, it is substantial. And we shouldn't lose that momentum when they go into the high school. We should be capitalizing on it. I understand we'll have a mixture there for a couple of years. But I, you know, if we can get these two grades to stay with these habits, because that's what it is, a habit. If we can keep these two, the ninth grade now and the incoming ninth grade, love you every high school. You only have to be dealing with the upper grades, Pat. But I just needed to get that out there for the community to hear.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it. And the administration has worked tirelessly at every level, whether it's the K through five holdings, whether it's the high school. I notice the difference when I walk through the hallways. And I think everything we do here is about students. And we all have the same vision. And that's what's important as we move forward. And it's not about discipline. It's about teaching kids long-life habits to your, you know, that's what it's about. So they don't feel that impulse of just grabbing the phone. That they go, maybe I'll just talk to somebody first. So, you know, thank you all because I know as we move forward, everything we do as a team is, what are we doing for the kids? Whether it's facilities, whether it's curriculum, whether it's policy, it's always about the kids. What do we do with the kids' best interest in mind? So we appreciate that. I just wanted to also give the board, I looked at my notes from last year. And we wanted to look at, continuing looking at our enrollment. Right now, our school administrators are working really hard. They've sat down with our students. What courses do you want next year? So once the students start selecting, we start looking at what courses are we offering? What's the most popular? What should we be focusing in on? So as we look at this, we also need to keep in mind of that our enrollment has changed. We are certainly not the only district. This is occurring in our neighboring districts. There's not many districts on Long Island that are growing. There are very, very few. Most districts are declining. So these are conversations that are being had at local BOCs with, you know, similar superintendents where we're all talking about demographics. We need people to have more children, we've decided. So I just wanted to show you the projection of where we anticipate we will be as we continue forward because we're always thinking, where are we going to be in three to five years in any planning that we do? So right now, if you look at our student data, you'll notice our high school has 592 students. Our middle school has 418. The Lucas Valley side district has a little bit of a larger enrollment in comparison to Bayville. You'll see that at the intermediate school, there's 225 compared to the Bayville Intermediate School, which is 166. Ann MacArthur Primary School has 215 compared to Bayville Primary, which has 180. We do have 15 students that are homebound students. So this is a total of 1,811 students. Last year, I brought this to the attention. We had about 495. Right now, we have 499 students that are choosing private schools. Same curve as far as selecting Friends Academy, Greenville and Portland. You can see that that's almost 300 of our students right there. So just to kind of look at this because internally, we're always saying to ourselves, what do we need to do better? What is it that maybe those students are going there for? Because we want as many of our students, God bless you, as possible to be with us. These are outside placements. These placements are made most likely by, you know, in conjunction with our director as well as the teams for students that need very specific support. So these are some of the other schools that we work with to educate our students. So we have 39 students in these different educational facilities. But, you know, most importantly, as we move forward as a team, the administration, we're constantly talking about enhancement to our schools. So how do we continuously get better? And one thing, I'm going to commend Dr. Sampaino as well as all the administration here because we sat down and started to really identify what were the areas that we wanted to improve upon and really help our educators, teachers, teaching assistants, administrators? How do we get better? So what we did is we compiled a book of professional development. And really, it was an overview. And when we sat back and looked at the opportunities that we've been providing, we said, wow, this has been a really great year so far. It's only February. And right now, we have already offered over 20 professional development workshops. That's something that has not occurred here in the past. So this is a very new beginning for us. 135 sessions. And I'm going to show you some of the sessions that we've done. And in many of these, you know, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Sampaino, has really worked very difficult, difficult work because you're always trying to work with your principals to find substitutes, to get scheduling, to get the outside people to come in and work with us. So it may just look like a couple of names out there of workshops, but there's a lot of work that goes into each and every workshop. As you know, we adopted the school-wide reading and writing workshop. I would hate to gander. I know we're way over 30 sessions just in the reading and writing workshop. I actually asked Dr. Sampaino's secretary to kind of add up some of the numbers. And I could not believe, yes, we're over 20 sessions already just for school-wide. For just words, we have different grade levels that are getting trained. For just words, we have different grade levels that are getting trained. Grades three, four, five. For foundations, even if teachers had had training years ago, we're inviting them back to be retrained, hone in on their skills. Teachers as readers for elementary. So this was one thing that really the team had recognized that sometimes we need to also talk about, what is reading? What is language acquisition? How do we really teach it? It's not about a program. It's about how do we meet every child's need depending on where they are at. The leader in me, the seven habits of highly successful people. Our trainer will be here actually tomorrow, working with AMP. And he's going to be working with BP, because we are starting full implementation in those two buildings. The teachers have already received training. Many of the teachers already have posted the mission statement in their classroom. Students are starting to know the seven habits. And then next year, LBI and BI will be fully implemented in Covey's work. So, and then we're hoping the year after that is going to be the middle school, et cetera. So this is very exciting for us. Our trainer, Gary McGee, is, his goal and our goal is for us to be at some point a lighthouse school. Enhancement to our secondary programs, these are just some of them again. Teachers as readers for secondary. We're always, every teacher is a reading teacher. Computer science, we had a course this year implementing nine through 12 computer science and digital fluency standards. And there's a link here just for people if they want to go in. But Mr. DeRose has created a very exciting summer research opportunity. That's on our district's website. And we continue to really look at this area as an area that we can continue to grow in. Some of the additional teacher training sessions, I mean, these are just ongoing training between mental health training, CPI training, which is crisis prevention and crisis prevention intervention. Our PSLAB for our students in our life skills program. Our mentor program, our new teacher workshops. Then we have all these after-school PDs, which are being delivered by our administration, which is a little new to us, and I'm so proud of the administration here. What a PD session looks like is you could have five or six administrators speaking about a specific topic area, and they're all coming in with their own information and sharing that wealth of knowledge with our teachers, really to support them. And also, you know, when we're supervising teachers, what are we looking for? What is it that together we're trying to culminate to help our students achieve? So these are some of the reflection series. Exploring goals and objectives, assessment and academic growth, meeting the needs of every learner, and technology integration and academic integrity. And those are the main topics. And then administrators, we've got APPR recertification. We're running a special education series. So myself, Dr. Cavallos, Mrs. Whiting. We've even included Mrs. Messina, who's doing our MTSS training. But we're all working on learning together. I think that would be the theme. We've got elementary team goal setting, secondary team goal setting. And this all has to do with the Board of Education's goals, so it's culminating up into these events. And then finally, we just had, we had the FBI on here, we had threat assessment training program. So we have an understanding of what student may, some characteristics that we need to be cautious of, look out for. So again, it's always about us learning. Future upgrades and enhancements, you know, really, Dr. Sampaino and the middle school team, they really want to do more middle school reading and writing training. We are looking at more dual enrollment courses offered in partnerships with our local colleges and universities, more civic summits. And then finally, I kind of put on the end, because this is going to be in March 4th, so I don't want to disclose too much. But we're going to continue to talk about and look at what our cafeteria of the future is going to look like, our high school library of the future. So we're hoping on March 4th, we get a big crowd to see some of the upcoming renderings of what we have really in store for our school as we move into the future. And then finally, something really exciting, and I want to thank the Board of Education for this, because they have approved the addition of one UPK class. We already had two UPK classes. We did have a waiting list, and that waiting list will be accommodated with this additional UPK class. We will announce where the class will be located as it gets closer. It could be several months before that comes up, because we're looking at space. But just please note the only one thing that I wanted to let the community know, that if you did not participate in the initial UPK lottery, unfortunately, you are not eligible. So for the people that we had on the waitlist, the registration department will be reaching out to you just to give you this good bit of news. And thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Thank you. We're going to talk extra loud, because our mics are not working. But thank you, Kristin, for your wonderful presentation. And all our administrators, thank you for being here. We're going to move on to board reports. We'll start with the audit committee.
No report.
And the budget and finance committee.
Technically, no report. But the one thing I did want to say is, so the community knows, the amount of time, effort, and work that Karen has put in already, and we haven't even really started in the budget season, if you will. We're just scratching the surface, but the time that she's spent in each building, with each program, with each administrator, it's been fantastic to watch. So I really want to recognize you and commend you, and we look forward to the presentation tonight.
Next up, thank you, George. This is the curriculum committee, who can report. Facilities committee, George.
So we have a few updates to let the community know. This evening, we had the public hearing on the bus garage and the gasoline tank. We're to have that delivered on February 20th, and we're just waiting for Nassau County to approve the work to be done, and that will then commence, which is something we had to do, as we all said. On the girls' locker room, as well as the bleacher and lights, those projects have finally been entirely completed. So all punchless items are done, and those are officially completed, which has been a long labor of love by Eric and his team. Coming this summer, the BI slate roof replacement is scheduled to occur, which is great. This week into next week, we'll be finalizing, the surveyors have finished, and the plans, our fingers crossed, will be coming to admin this week or next week on the middle school, high school parking lot. And that work will commence this summer as well. And as Kristin alluded to, we've been meeting with our Mark Design, and they are continuing with the iterations of their drawings. They've moved architectural drawings on the cafeteria, and they're starting their investigations for the middle school, high school, library projects. So there's been a lot of work. The community will be hearing even more come March 4th, as we discuss more about capital projects. And we really need the entire community to understand, and I'll underscore for one quick minute, these projects are not an impact to our budget. It has nothing to do with the taxpayers' budget and the budget proposition that we'll be approving come May. This is money we've stored away. Our district has been incredibly fiscally prudent. We've saved the money carefully, and we've allotted these projects with community input. And we really need the entire community to understand that and to support these. Thank you.
Thank you so much, George. I'm going to move on to policy committee.
Oh, sorry.
We had a meeting this morning. We are finishing up a very cumbersome policy for attendance. It's taken about two meetings, maybe three, and we're still not finished. So we're working on that, and right after break, we have, we will be commencing the work on the code of conduct.
And there's no report from the technology committee, but I do want to announce that will be taken over by Nick Delafera, and he definitely sends his regards to the board and also the community this evening in his absence. Do we have any other reports to the board? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. The first thing up this evening is the adoption of the proposed 25-26 district calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the calendar? Margaret? And I'll take a second. Matt, all in favor? It's unanimous. The second thing on our agenda is the second reading and adoption of a new policy. This is policy 1600, unmanned aerial vehicles, drones. Mike, can I have a motion, please? George, second. Matt, all in favor? It's unanimous. We'll move on now to new business, and we welcome Karen Orchesky to the podium for a presentation, it's budget presentation two. Thank you, Karen.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to discuss the budget presentation number two. That's the tax cap and the non-instructional budget codes. Tonight, I will review the following points. Review of the 24-25 budget. Understanding the tax cap, what is it and how is it calculated? Fund balance and reserves. The non-instructional budget codes. And finally, the 24-25 budget timeline. Let's begin by reviewing this year's voter-approved budget. We budgeted $96.4 million in expenditures. This reflected a 2.65 budget increase. As shown on the pie chart, you can see nearly 75% of the budget is allocated towards salary and benefits. Now let's look at the revenues. You can see our tax levy is $88 million. That was an increase of 1.96%. When you look at the charge, you can see that the vast majority of the revenue comes from our taxpayers. Specifically, of a $96.4 million budget... Give it a go. Sorry. 91.3, 36% of the budget is funded by our taxpayers. Here's a quick look at the district's snapshot. So let's begin by taking a closer look at the tax cap. Back in 2011, the property tax cap formula was signed into law with the purpose of limiting the annual growth of property taxes by our local government and school districts to 2% or to the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. There are several components to the tax cap calculation. The first is the prior-year tax levy, following the tax-based growth factor, which measures the change in real, sorry, real property value within the district. This value is determined by the state. Then we have pilots. They're known as payments in lieu of taxes. Locust Valley only has one pilot, and that's LIPA. We have the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, or 2%, whichever is lower. Since the average change of CPI in 2024 was 2.95%, we will be using 2% in the formula. And lastly, there are exclusions. For Locust Valley, the exclusions include our capital projects, debt service, bus purchases, and the BOSIs' capital expenditures. So now let's look at the formula. We start with step one. We take the prior-year tax levy and we multiply it by the tax-based growth factor. Again, that was given to us by New York State. We're going to add our prior-year pilots and subtract out our prior-year exclusions. That, that is the adjusted prior-year tax levy. Step two, we're going to take that number and multiply it by either the CPI or 2%, whichever is lower. And finally, we're going to then take that number and calculate the current-year tax levy. We're going to subtract out the current-year pilots and add back the current-year exclusions, that's debt and capital. And that results in the current-year tax levy maximum. So here's the latest calculation for our district's maximum tax levy. As we approach the March 1st recording deadline to the state, the numbers have become more finalized. The maximum levy increase is close to $2.4 million, which is a 2.7% increase. So what is fund balance? Fund balance is the accumulated excess of our reserves over expenses in a given fund. It serves as a measure of our financial health and flexibility to the district. And it's classified into four categories. First, non-spendable. That includes our prepaid expenses. Next is restricted. These are reserves that are set up for specific purposes. Signed, that comes from our prior year's encumbrances. And finally, the unassigned fund balance, which is also called the rainy day fund, which is capped by law at 4% of the following year's budget. Let's take a quick look at our district's reserves and fund balance over the past five years. A few takeaways. As of June 2024, our fund, our balance stands at $25.6 million. The district unassigned fund balance is at 4%, which is in full compliance of New York State law. And finally, you'll notice that capital reserve stands at $10.7 million. Tonight, we are focusing our attention on reviewing the non-instructional budget codes, specifically the 1,000 codes. Let's start with the A1010 code, which is the Board of Education. You will note a small increase of $1,100 in the contractual line. And this is due to increases in subscription and membership costs. Now we look at the 1040 line, the district clerk. There is a $15,000 increase in the non-instructional salary. This represents a reclassification of salary from A1240. This is not an additional expense, it's just a reclassification. Next comes the A1060, which is called district meetings, but it really should be called budget codes. The increase of $2,100 reflects budgeting based on actual expenditures. And following, the following code is the 1240, which is the superintendent's of school code. The first line, which is instructional salaries, includes an estimate of contractual salary increases. For the next line, which is non-instructional salaries, we see a negative adjustment. This is due to a reflass of that $15,000 from the previous slide, as well as an estimated salary increase. Next is the A1310, the business administration. That's my office's line. You'll see under the instructional salaries, there is a decrease of $43,000. This change reflects a change in the personnel, including the retirement, and moving a .5 FTE into the code that includes the Director of Operations. Under the non-instructional salaries, there is an increase of $81,000. This represents both a reallocation of clerical staff, which is coming from the A1620 code, plus an estimated contractual salary increases. Moving along, we have 1320, which is auditing. Under this code, it's a combined increase with the district's free accounting funds. Under this code, it's a combined increase with the district's free accounting funds. Under the A1325 treasure, we estimate a, we estimate a contractual salary increase. And finally, under the A1420 legal, this line remains unchanged. Next, it's the A1430, which is personnel. You will see there is an increase in the instructional salary line. This is a result of our promotion, not a new FTE. This salary was reallocated from another budget line, which was A2020. The next line, which is non-instructional salary, has a decrease due to a position being reclassified to another line, which is for a registrar, to A2110123. And finally, we do see a $4,000 increase in the HR BOSI's line and this reflects a new HR and employee management system. As we move along to operations of a plant and maintenance and grounds, these are account codes A1620 and A1621. You will see in both codes, both of the codes, that there are increases in the non-instructional salary codes and they are both due to contractual salary increases. You will also notice in both codes that there were increases to contractual lines. On the 1620.4, that's the operation of the plant, that reflects an increase in our cost of security in the buildings. For the A1621.4, that reflects proposed maintenance projects for the upkeep of our And you'll see on the maintenance and supply line, under the 1621, that's the second to the last line, that increases $17,000. Believe it or not, that reflects an increase in seed and fertilizer for the district. So this is the final slide for tonight. If we look at the 1670 printing, you will notice there's been a decrease and that's due to, we're basing the budget on actual expenditures. Under A1910, unallocated insurance, there is an increase and that's due to stipulations of agreements for student placements. This is the hardest one for me, which is A1931. This is property insurance. I'm sure everybody's dealing with property insurance increases, but this is an increase based on the previous year's change. A1981, this is an estimated increase in BOSI's administrative costs. And finally, the last line, which is A1989 for unclassified, that is our tax reimbursement payment and district activities, here is no change. So what's next? On March 4th, we're going to be talking, we'll be discussing the instructional budget codes. That includes special education and athletics. And thank you very much for this opportunity. Kristin.
Thank you, Karen. That was extremely thoughtful and well put together. We appreciate the time and we look forward to a robust budget season ahead. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. I do want to just mention a couple of things that are included in the consent agenda this evening. Number one is an approval for the repair reserve withdrawal, which we discussed earlier. And the second is a lovely donation from the high school parent council. As we all remember, Mr. Lou DeRose had visited us a few months ago and presented on the science research program that is going on with our high school students. And of course, Dr. Chernow had to go and visit and it wouldn't be a science research program if they, you know, of course, didn't take the opportunity to say, we really love this amazing new high-tech computer, that would make our work so much better. And the high school parent council was so gracious to make a $1,000 donation, which will go towards the purchasing of a very fancy new computer and we're just really looking forward to the work that we'll see from it. So we look forward to continuing to support their research program. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Holly, second? Come on, Christina. Christina, all in favor? Okay, at this, do we have any more public comment? Okay, thank you. At this time, the Board of Education will be going in to accept to discuss legal matters. Can I have a motion to adjourn to accept? Holly, second? George, all in favor? It's unanimous. Have a wonderful night, everyone. Thank you for being here.